Call the order for a Watertown City Council meeting for April 21st of 2025. Please rise while Councilman Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here on this, this new day, this evening to, to go about the city's business, we just ask for wisdom. We ask for your guidance, your leading in, in every decision, Lord. We, we not minimize anything. Everything, Lord, is, has value for somebody in this community. So we just pray, Father, for the wisdom and the direction as a council here and all those involved in the process to get to their right proper decisions. And also, Lord, we lift up, you know, the, the library, Lord, in this community. There's many, many facilities to pray for, but today, Lord, I lift up the library in town as they gear up for the, for the spring and summer programs. Just give them direction and wisdom and guidance on, on material and the, and the kids that come through there and adults and whomever, just to be able to, um, just do, uh, properly do their job and be able to be a blessing to, to people in this community. So we just pray this all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Absent.
Peters? Absent. Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now on to open forum. If there is someone here who would like to address the council on something not on the agenda, now is your time to do so.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Emmett Reisstrafer. I am from Rapid City and I'm here representing my employer tonight, Genesis Farms. And it is a pleasure to, to visit Watertown. I'm gonna stick around to get a burger at Mavericks after this. Um, it's your first time meeting me. I know I've emailed staff and called City Hall probably a dozen times and I don't mean to pester or be annoying ever, but I've just been kind of monitoring, um, every community in the state as being the largest medical cannabis company in the state. We have a 10 locations and a presence in eight different cities and great relationships everywhere we do business. So I guess tonight is my first time to, uh, come forward publicly and just state that we would love to come to Watertown. Um, I have to respect the privacy of the patients we serve, but I'll just say there's many from Watertown, um, that drive all the way down to, uh, Brookings and Sioux Falls to come to us and we're trying to meet them where they're at. And, um, I guess why is it necessary to, uh, approach you during public comment is, you know, it's been a few years now and early on I worked with a lot of communities on just feedback on ordinances. Now we have seen some cities start to kind of go back and take a look at any changes that may be needed. Um, just one example is I worked with the city of Mitchell recently, um, to expand the hours of operation so we could stay open. Uh, two hours later there might seem like a minor change, but it's actually been, um, a pretty good uptick in business for us. And there it was, uh, an exciting moment for me when I heard the police chief, um, answer a council member's question that there had not been any increases in crime or any real concerns, you know, from a public safety perspective. So I just feel like we're integrating in the communities where we operate. Like I said, we would love to come to Watertown. Um, I do want to ask you, you know, when the time is appropriate to take a look at the current ordinance. Um, Watertown is one of a handful of communities that strictly prohibits the transfer of the licenses. Um, not sure who was all here at the time when that ordinance passed, but you may recall there was a lottery for those licenses and some folks got licenses, some folks may not have. Um, other cities have kind of scrapped that lottery process now that the market has changed a lot. There's a lot less folks trying to get into the industry. And now actually there's folks who are trying to get out of the industry. Um, so we're trying to work with the current license holder here in Watertown. Um, this gentleman, I want to respect his privacy as well, but wants to retire. Um, we would like to come to Watertown if there's a way to do that through a license transfer, but right now the ordinance would not allow that. Now I know there's other groups, um, and in Spearfish, I'll give one example. They have a, an ordinance that's written very similarly, uh, but some lawyers, um, figured out a way to write up an agreement and do a workaround, which we are not in favor of. And we, we caution you to look for that sort of thing. That's not what we want to do. We want to be transparent. We don't think folks should do workarounds. You should come to public comment like this and express interest and that sort of thing. So I guess all I'm asking for is, uh, just a chance to talk to you all. I'll send a follow-up email so you have my information. Would love to give you my ideas. I hope you can hear ideas from other folks in the community and, and maybe someday I'd get to do business here. That's my hope. Maybe a stakeholder meeting or something. Um, so nothing real, you know, pressing right now, I guess, but, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself and make that kind of request that you think about that. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something? I'll close public hearing. We'll go right into item 9A, an approval of a bid award for the 2025 Prairie Lakes Wellness Center roof, project 2514 to All American Roofing in the amount of roughly $220,000. City Engineer Peterson, please tell us more.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, this project is to, um, uh, add a, a membrane roof over top of the, the steel roof, the, at the wellness center, uh, over the gym. Uh, there, uh, there was a hailstorm last, last summer that, that damaged the roof and, uh, this is the, the project to replace that. Um, we received four bids. All of them were below the engineer's estimate. Um, funding, a part of the funding comes from the insurance claim and we'd recommend approval. With that, I'll stand by with any questions.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the, a bid award? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Open it up for comments, questions. Councilman Tupper.
How much of that was covered under the insurance portion? Do you remember?
It, it's all.
It's all covered. Okay. You said a portion of it was covered. That's why I'm just double checking. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, council? Councilman Danforth.
Did we get paid the amount noted, the, the 344? Or are we actually, did we get paid that amount from the insurance company and, and the bids are at whatever they are, 219 or whatever that number is? Or do we just get the amount, which is our cost?
No, we have already received the insurance of the 344. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. City Manager Bob Zine.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9B, authorization to purchase the River Ridge Playground Fitness Course Turf surfacing for $115,000 through My Turn Play Systems Sourcewell contract, uh, number. So we'll go to our Parks and Rec Director, Dusty Rodick.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This, uh, this was a Sourcewell contract. Um, this complements back in December. We had, uh, purchased the obstacle course equipment, uh, for the River Ridge development and the, this is the surfacing that will go under it. It's a synthetic turf. Yeah, I would say similar to Foundation Plaza, but it's gonna have more cushioning under it. Um, this is part of the, the River Ridge Park development and the, the exciting thing about this is this is a feature that we do not have in any of our other parks. Uh, this is gonna be unique to that site.
Great. Thank you, Director Rodick. Counsel, can I get a motion to authorize the purchase? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. We'll start with Councilman Tupper.
Uh, Dusty, does this have a, is it ADA com- like, like the, uh, one down there by the river?
The, the, the obstacle course as much as it can be. There are certain elements to it that, um, you know, will be restricted, but you know, again, you know, it's, it's designed for active climbing, things like that.
Yep. So.
There will be, there will be a, in a later phase, probably next year, um, based on budgeting and what have you, we would be planning on putting a, a standard playground equipment up there that would likely have some accessible elements.
Yep. So in, in, so in, in the future, are we kind of planning when we do a park to do that type of, you know, so they're all ADA compatible with the playground equipment, that is?
With, with the playground equipment, um, moving forward, it's, it would be my goal to do a With, with the playground equipment, um, moving forward, it's, it would be my goal to do a, a surface underneath those playgrounds that are accessible, uh, kind of go away from the wood chip, uh, you know, pea gravel, things like that. Uh, so each site would, would be wheelchair accessible.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments or questions, council? Director Rodick, I'd just like to thank you. I had actually a couple citizens who live up in that area, uh, call to thank the city for, uh, getting on that. They're very excited for it.
I'm excited to see it take place.
Yeah. So, all right. Thank you very much. The motion is to authorize the purchase. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 11A is a second reading of an ordinance 25-03 zoning text amendments to chapter, chapter 24 subdivision of land of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is number 24. So, uh, for the disordinance amendment for 24 is a handful of clarifying items, some Unicode recommendations, and then some follow-up from the work session that we had in February. The, uh, from that work session, there was a discussion about the length of time for the development agreements. And so, uh, the way it's written is, uh, if the right-of-way or the street length in the development is less than a half mile, it'd be a two-year development agreement. If it's between a half mile and a mile, it'd be a three-year development agreement. And, um, if it's over a mile, then it need special approval, but, uh, the, the mile tends to be the, in historical, uh, point where the developers typically can't complete it in, in three years. So. And, uh, those development agreements can be renewed by council a year at a time. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, City Engineer Peterson. Uh, Community Development Manager, Han, did you have anything that you'd like to add? Okay. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, take it up for action. Can I get a motion to approve the, the amendments? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Councilman Danforth.
Um, Ju- Justin, is this, the allowance of these extended timeframes? Will there be milestones or, or items that would be required along that way? I mean, as, as maybe somebody, it starts to develop, people start buying properties, they start building businesses or homes or whatever it is. Are there going to be requirements that say, okay, we've got development now occurring versus just the infrastructure? Example are the roads, right? Second lifts on roads, if people are gonna be living there. Are there gonna be any requirements that, that says, okay, you gotta, you gotta finish the road as you go, at least through, I would hate to see roads sit there for three years or four years or more, not completed if you've got development occurring. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, is it, it might be clear as mud.
The, um, the, there, there are, I guess, checkpoints for like curb and gutter and, um, underground infrastructure that would need to be done before the building permit is issued. The development agreement, the agreement that these developers sign, that's what kind of holds, holds them to getting the, these roadways completed within the, the three-year timeframe, or two-year depending on the length, but, um, and then it has to come back to council in which they, they'd have to, explain to council why they're not, not done and, and what they're planning on doing to, uh, to complete the, the project.
Okay, but I want to go back to it. What if they're successful with this and development is occurring along their, whatever stretch of road it is? Do they need to, because of that development, do they need to finish the road? Or are, can they just put it off until the end of two years, three years, whatever that term is?
The way it's, they, they could put it off for three years if, if they choose to, I guess.
Good.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, we discussed at that work session, you know, about what would be the right term, just having a, as a, you know, in our engineering department, working with developers on not just this road part of it, but following up, maybe like a checklist a year into it, second year or three years into it to, you, maybe there's a, maybe sometimes a developer is unaware of, of something, um, that they have to get done. Maybe it's just got missed. Just to make sure that, to keep things moving forward. So I suppose would this be one of those items too where, you don't want to be a few months away from year three and, and there's no road being done. So I would guess we'd hope we'd have a system in play where they're kind of hopefully systematically getting the road done, because obviously it sounds like it's tough to do it all at once. So it'd be wise for a developer to do it periodically, or not periodically, but, you know, systematically. But I guess this just goes back to, I guess, our discussion about some, I mean, I believe you're working on that, I believe, right? To kind of work this out with, with developers and, and communicate maybe more often and so I like, things keep moving right along.
Yes. Uh, we do, we do plan on having regular, um, updates with, with the, the developer. And, um, you know, hopefully that, that, hopefully it doesn't get to the end where there's surprises. Um, one thing I will, uh, point out, you know, one of the advantages for, to the developer to get it done sooner is then it's handed over to the city. So the, the sooner they, they finish it, the, the better, I think, for them, but, um, yeah.
Community Development Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And Justin, yeah, just to kind of expand off of what he's saying here, where you're also going to, in the inspection process, like typically you do your first lift and then let that go through a freeze-thaw cycle and then do the second lift. So if somebody was doing more than a half a mile of linear, um, linear feet of street installation, and engineering knows that, that they have a three-year time period, well, if they're not getting that first lift, aft, like within that second year, then engineering would be on them for that. And there's easy ways that they can add that into our checklist and just, um, workflow of, of holding them accountable too.
Any other questions or comments? Just want to again thank the staff for going through and bringing forward the revisions after we heard directly from the contractors and the developers. Uh, this is exactly what I want to see more of going forward is, but first I also want to say to everyone out there, any developer, any contractor, we don't know until you tell us exactly what you're facing. So when you, the more information you share with us, the better we can assist you. So thank you very much. Motion is to accept the amendments. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 11B is a second reading of, of ordinance revisions of the city of Watertown to amend ordinance title five. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, title five, there's a handful of, of clarifications based off of questions that come up from, developers and permit holders, um, some Unicode recommendations, and incorporated, incorporated some items related to the, the flood damage protection, um, based off, uh, the last CRS review. Like to note, there's been one minor change since the first reading, um, clarifying the, the wet, wet proofing for, uh, non-residential structures, garages, sheds, less than 600 square feet. And, uh, just wanted to make that known. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to accept the amendments? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, second by Councilman Tupper. So open it up for conversation questions. Hearing none, the motion is to accept the amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12A is an approval of resolution 25-13, a resolution adopting a revised procurement policy for the city of Watertown, South Dakota. City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is, I would say it's not new. The procurement call, policy was actually approved by the council in April of 2024. Um, since that time, there's a few areas that were not clearly spelled out within that policy and also some that felt maybe a little cumbersome for staff. So we did sit down, um, exclusively as department heads and then also brought forward to, uh, division managers as well. And we kind of worked through the document. Um, what we feel like is we have brought forward a very streamlined document. Kind of brings it back to some of the old ways that we did things. Um, I guess the example I would give is, so, previously there was quite a large table and it kind of spelled it out on different levels of expenses. We've kind of brought it back to the way it was. So my example would be, um, the airport department has a specific budget. That airport manager is responsible for those budgeted items as far as goods and services. Um, not kind of creating those multi-levels. So that, that's what it brings it back to. And then we also did clearly defined, uh, a one-time annual contract and then a multi-year contract and how those are handled. Um, so specifically in terms of us, an annual contract, um, as long as that is a budgeted for expense, um, a department head has the ability to sign into that contract one-time, annual, within budget. They can go ahead and enter into that with the expectation that the council has approved the budget and knew that that was an expense that they were going to have, whether it was a software or anything like that. In terms of the multi-year, uh, we did go a little bit further into detail. We limited how long they can be, how many times they can be renewed. If it is a new contract, it's never been seen before by the council, um, regardless of if it's in budget, it does come before the council. At that stage, then it can be renewed with just the department head or division manager, as long as it stays within, um, it can't increase more than 15%. And it can't be more than an annual cost of $50,000. Otherwise it automatically needs to come back to the council. So we, we, we felt that there was a little bit that needed to be more clearly defined when it came to those. So that's kind of the work that we did. We also, I think, did a good job. We kind of wanted to treat the document, if you were a new staff member or new to the council or a vendor, you know, what does that process look like, talking about going through the bid process? Um, in the past, the finance department had had quite a bit of interaction with, uh, the different departments to help facilitate the bidding process. Um, we had kind of stepped away from that. We will be stepping back into that, so making sure that it's kind of a standard process regardless of what department is doing it. Um, other than that, I guess I'll kind of look for any questions. The other part that I did want to, um, talk about that was a little bit of a different change is this resolution is written as such that any changes to this policy, um, do require council approval. On the previous one had a little bit more of a caveat that it was at the city manager's, um, approval. This one we did change so that the city council, because it does talk about the funds and who has the ability to, uh, sign contracts and kind of be the sign-off of any expenditures. So this will always come back to the city council. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Shuddy. And I would like to, before I open it up for questions and conversation, I'd like to offer an amendment. In talking with City Manager Bob Zine earlier today about this, we found something that was perhaps overlooked and we just want to correct that. If you would go to page 11 in section 3.3, which is single purchase under bid limit, we'll go to the third sentence and I would like to add a sentence in there. And it would be, "For purchases of goods and services in the budget for the mayor or city council, invoices will be approved by the mayor and deputy mayor." So what has happened is we handled all of the other departments, but there is always a budget item for the mayor and city council. And in the past, there have been invoices that were approved and signed and the mayor and city council did not even know about them. So, uh, so we just want to make sure that that is rectified going forward. So that was the amendment I would like to make. Uh, can I get a second on the amendment? Ament, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Um, let's just talk about the amendment for right now, if that's okay. So any?
Could you reread it one more time?
Okay. So, "For purchases of goods and services in the budget for the mayor and city council, invoices will be approved by the mayor and deputy mayor."
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Okay. Any comments on that amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now, now on to item 12A as amended. Councilman Tupper.
So we have a bid limit of $50,000, correct?
It is $50,000 for equipment, $100,000 for improvements.
Okay. Do you feel honestly that the $50,000 is a little bit too big a reach? And I, I'm just asking this question because a long time ago, we used to have a finance committee on the council. We no longer do. I see, I'm not gonna point any fingers, but I, I've seen it happen where the cities actually went out and, and, uh, department heads have procured things without going out shopping around to make sure that we're getting the, the best buy. I, I just have a problem with the $50,000, just, just giving them a checkbook, here you go buy whatever you want for $50,000 as long as it was, you know, this is what my plan was this year to replace this, this, or this. And we don't know if the, if we did a good job for the taxpayer, whether or not we got them a, a good value or not.
So I will say the, the $50,000 is the bid law. Um, so we would, we would stick to that. Um, we do try to have, I know most department heads and most division managers, if that is under the bid limit, we do try to go out and, receive quotes for multiple, you know, multiple vendors. Um, so that is part of the process. I thought that maybe, I don't know if we.
I guess if there was the words quotes in there, local quotes, I mean, then, then it would be a little bit different, but I've seen that happen more than once where there was no quotes taken and they, they purchased whatever they,
Okay.
whatever they found they wanted, put it that way.
I would say that would not try to be what our standard practice is, is I, I do think that most of the departments do do a,
Yeah, they do. Yep, yep.
good job of that. But yeah, as far as the bid law, it is the $50,000 and then the hundred.
I just want to make sure we're being great stewards of the taxpayer dollars.
I agree. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Shuddy.
Appreciate your work on this. I was kind of looking through it and, uh, that you guys put together a graph or two that kind of helped explain it with the pop-up pictures. That was kind of, kind of nice. Uh, no, it did. It, it helps, it helps understand it for anybody that wants to read this. You can kind of see the flow chart, I guess, if you will, and so do appreciate your work on it.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution as amended. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a personnel policy for the city of Watertown. Authorizing the interim, and authorizing the city, interim city manager, city manager to administer the personnel policy as needed. So we'll go to our Human Resources Director, Darcy Nichols.
Hi, good evening, council. Before you is the, uh, brand-new personnel policy for the city of Watertown. I just wanted to provide a little background information for you tonight as to how we kind of worked through in vetting some of this and developing it. Uh, it's been quite a journey. Uh, we've been working on this for about eight months now. Uh, we started back in March of 2024 with a off-site retreat. Department heads were there. Um, we had a couple of councilmen there as well, uh, at least that joined us for lunch and kind of got involved a little bit with that activity. Uh, we, I, we talked a lot about the, the personal policy manual that we had and how long it had been since we had updated it. And we felt like due to the time that had passed, we wanted to look at kind of scrapping that and starting with something new and fresh. Uh, we did have a consultant company that looked at our manual and provided some recommendations for what, what they would suggest that we change when we move forward with a new one. And I think with the department heads, we kind of. And I think with the department heads, we kind of landed on looking at the municipal league's manual and the example that they provide to municipalities and kind of using that as like our baseline or our guide. And then we, you know, tried to modernize it a bit from there, looking at different policies in other municipalities, not just throughout South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota, regional type things. We modernized things in terms of a social media, artificial intelligence. I believe, you know, Lisa worked some on that. And then we created a work group of department heads. I don't want to go without that because they're in the audience with me. So Maria, and Don, and Lisa Carrico, and Pete Boyle. We did a ton of research and just work vetting all of these policies, having heavy discussion, revision. We probably met every two weeks then and kind of, you know, chunked policies together and looked at them and reviewed them. And then we arrived at where we felt like, okay. We looked at our old manual, made sure we had everything in there, you know, that was there, didn't leave things out of the old manual that we wanted to move forward. And we rolled it out to all of our department heads for one more refresh look at. And from there, we had some really good intense discussions on some of the newer policies. So we felt really comfortable bringing some of those in. And since then, it's been rolled out and reviewed by all of the managers within the organization. So all of our division heads and mid-level managers, and they've been able to provide some feedback as well. And I think what we landed on in the process, too, is kind of a plan for how we'll kind of go. My colleague Michelle Shuddy and I will be going out to some different division meetings and kind of talking about the new manual and, you know, what might be different, and just pointing some things out to people. So that is our plan going forward with that. And also just want to talk briefly about why do companies or organizations have personnel policy manuals? And it's to provide a uniform administrative personnel system throughout the city to inform employees about policies and the obligations and benefits of employment with the city to ensure all of our personnel actions are in compliance with the law and that they're based upon employee qualifications and performance to demonstrate the city's commitment to fair employment practices, assist managers in making good use of their human resources to promote communication between the supervisor and the employee and to protect the rights of the employee and the employer throughout the employment relationship. So it kind of is designed to go from pre-employment to end-of-employment throughout the whole lifecycle of the employee. And then, you know, just to kind of high-level summary of who this applies to, this particular personnel policy manual is going to apply to all of our exempt staff. So that's all of our department heads, our division managers, and all of our mid-level management team, including all of our assistant department heads or assistant superintendents, records and licensing manager, our engineering staff, all of our assistant chiefs, police captains, battalion chiefs, any foreman in the city. And then again, our library staff, they're not represented by union. So that involves about 71 people in positions that this is their primary, you know, personnel policy reference. And then who it doesn't apply to is you as elected officials. It doesn't apply to our frontline staff who are currently represented by CBAs or our collective bargaining agreements. However, if the agreements are silent on any policy, this is kind of the backup policy. This is the reference guide. So it would also apply to a new city manager until and unless, you know, there were specified policies or things that you wanted to add in that employment agreement. Okay? And I think we would then like to talk about who can make changes or amendments to it, just, you know, briefly. The new, or the interim city manager and new city manager can always amend policies one through five, which are the operational or more administrative policies of the city. And then your approval, city council approval, would be required to make any changes to policies six and seven, which have more of a financial or a budgetary impact to them. So with that, I would open it up to any questions that you all have.
And we will do so after we take a motion to approve the policy and authorize the administration of the policy. Motion made by Councilman Tupper. Seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for questions and conversation. Councilman Tupper.
H.R. Director Nichols, when was the last time this was redone?
2018.
So it's not terrible, but hopefully we would keep it up to date a little bit. Hopefully, in your plans, it's every two, three years to look at it a little bit closer.
Sure, sure.
And I thank everybody, the department heads and division and all the way down the line that had anything to do with this, and thank your department for getting it done. Couldn't did it without the other help. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Councilman Danforth.
I'll start off with a question. How is this going to be used within the, those that are, well, within our employees?
This is their guiding document for any questions they have about employment, benefits, expectations of performance, how they do their job, how they would be disciplined if there was an issue.
So if I'm a new employee?
Yes.
Do you guys, does HR, somebody, sit down with me and go through a lot of this? Or is it just handed to me, or I'm told where it's at on the webpage? How is it used?
Yep, you're told where it's at on the webpage. You're provided a hard copy. And we do go over some of those policies with you, as do, I think, your supervisors as you're working out in the departments as well.
So just to make sure, you know, I've looked through this, but I don't know what previous policy was. I just looked through this as it was presented to us. So I'm going to ask the question, has there been any expansion of benefits or the metrics, or the pay, or pay scales, or separation terms at end of employment? Has there been any changes to that that are adverse to budget?
No. All of the vacation accruals stay the same as we've discussed previously with the union contract negotiations. No changes have been made to payouts. There was a change to our promotion rate for any promotions within the city. Previously, the promotion rate was at a 3.5% if you were promoted, which meant, you know, you interviewed for a job above the job you currently have, and you were the selected candidate. And we were held to like a 3, 3.5% for most, or 5% for FIRE, if you were in the FIRE union. And we, you know, kind of overwhelmingly decided that that was a little bit low. And we did, the department heads vetted this decision pretty thoroughly, and we moved it to 6% for a promotion. So it went from 3.5% to 6%.
As a minimum.
As a guideline that we would stick to unless, you know, if we didn't, we would be getting approval. So, because there's financial or budget with it. So we would kind of, we would be sticking to that 6% promotion rate. And then we also amended slightly the transfer rate. So our previous policy stated that if you transferred to a lower-paying position or classification, we did a calculation based upon step one times 8.7, no, 8.25%, which was three steps. We felt like people were being a little bit overly punished for moving to the lower grade. So we moved that to 10 to give it one additional step. So if that calculation meant that you would go down to a step three, we wanted to adjust it so you would go to a step four. So it's just a 2% difference. So those were the two financial changes made.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the policy and the authorization to administer the policy. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12C is a council approval of a building permit fee reduction for the Cottington County Detention Facility. We will go to Community Development Manager Hanton.
Thank you, Mayor. So this request is obviously related to the Cottington County Detention Facility and the request from the Cottington County Commissioners, and specifically Commissioner Gable that is here with us today, who can join if you guys have any questions for him specifically. And then also with Sheriff Brad Howell, presented to the city about the exception potentially to accept a lower building permit fee. And that is set by a city council per resolution at the beginning of each year. So going off of our scale for the fee schedule for a commercial project, this project's valuation is upwards of $30 million. So from where our fee schedule is set, and then what the 50% for the plan review fee is also included for commercial building permit reviews, the amount would have been around $140,000. And so what staff is presenting to council, and obviously council's the only one that can make this exception, would be that we would collect $10,000 at the time that the building permit is ready to be issued because staff feels confident that that will cover administrative costs for the staff's time, because we want to be partners with our governmental entities of Cottington County. And then the overall benefits that the new detention facility will provide for the city as well. And that it's a Cottington County project. And so then that way, we're at least recovering hard costs that the city is incurring. And because obviously for the building plan review and then for ongoing inspections during construction, and then finalizing, doing certificate of completions and whatnot, we felt like that was appropriate and presented that to Commissioner Gable. And I think he actually presented that to the entire board of commissioners. But, and that we were in agreeance with that. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
I see Commissioner Gable in the room. Commissioner, would you like to say anything?
Good evening, thanks, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Yeah, so like Brandy was saying, the county jail is a county project. By law, counties are the ones stuck building jails. But it's also a community project. And so all the residents of Watertown are residents of the county. It just makes sense for the, our two government entities to work together. And we appreciate, I think it's, you know, very reasonable, the $10,000 is very reasonable. I did mention it informally with, to my fellow commissioners. The way we'll approve it, obviously, is when we approve the expense to actually pay for whatever we end up having to pay for. The, I would say, it just makes sense. It's a community working together. It's beneficial for law enforcement of the county, law enforcement of the city. And, yeah, I guess I appreciate, I appreciate Brandy's work on this. She's been very helpful with any questions that we have about this, you know, the planning aspects of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the permit fee reduction. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Let's open it up for conversations and questions. Councilman Tupper.
This one's really easy to get behind. I mean, it just, it just doesn't make any sense for one taxable entity to charge the other taxable entity that fee. I mean, it's just good partnerships. And I've, you know, over the last couple of years, I've seen some great partnerships starting to evolve with the city and county. And I'd like to see that continue. This is just one step to seeing that continue, so.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Commissioner Gable, is there any update you would like to give? I mean, I'm not saying our TV audience is that much larger than yours, but it's possible.
Probably, probably is a little bit, but anyway. Yeah, so we're in the thick of design development, very close to where we start drawing construction documents. So that's a lot of detailed discussions between the sheriff, the jail staff, and our architects. And so just, you know, all the little details of what this kind of structure takes. And so, given the fact that, and so people are asking me often, when do we expect to break ground? So if everything goes well, we're hoping to break ground sometime in July. So hopefully, earlier is better. And then the process would take about two years to build this kind of, this kind of thing. Today, we had some soil boring swinging, at least that was the schedule. So I haven't heard anything about, you know, the results of that yet. But, so that's, that's working. People are wondering where the structure is going. It's on 212, right on the very edge of the city limits. So in that lot, close to, discount seats, yeah, thank you. So on the north side of 212. If you have any questions about, maybe I'm missing something, but if you have any questions about the project, I'll try to answer them.
Commissioner Gable, thank you. And just like to say thanks for the city staff for doing that. It makes sense that we work together. I like the mutually beneficial relationship we have with the county. It's going very well. So thank you. With that said, the motion is to approve the permit fee reduction. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I'd like to start by saying one, and that is just, I think it's already gotten out, but citywide cleanup, which is different than the city cleaning week. There was a little bit of a, this week is your week to go out and pick up trash along, like, roadways if you're part of a service club. Starting this weekend, you can start putting things out on your curb to get picked up. That we will pick it up. So please do not put stuff out ahead of time. And the reason being is because it's just public safety and a lot of other things go into it, including the sanctity of personal property. A lot of people go kind of crazy driving around trying to pick up some stuff. So please respect that. And one of the ways that you can is don't put things out until this weekend. So, but we will be picking it up, picking it up starting next week. And any other announcements? Councilman Tupper.
Just pay close attention to that, too, because there is some items that they will not pick up. Don't ask me to list them. I mean, other than chemicals and paint and stuff like that that you will be allowed to take to the wastewater treatment facility, I believe. So just watch the media. I know they do a great job for us, giving us a list of what you can and what you can't because Ann wants to go through your neighborhood. Don't put stuff out after that because they're not coming back to your neighborhood. So if you miss it, you've missed it, so.
Any other announcements? Councilman Danforth.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, specifically on the citywide cleanup date, it's the 26th and 27th. And I do believe that I heard, and I think I read just a little bit ago, that the free dumping with proof of residency is the 21st through May 3rd. I believe that's what I saw on the webpage. So I know I've been asked about those things. The one thing that I have been asked about by several people has been that the city manager hiring status. If somebody can give us an update there as to where we're at, I would appreciate it, and I know the public would.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Danforth. Councilman Peters is not here, but knowing that he wasn't here, I did reach out to the committee and ask them what to share. So as of now, they have contacted over 200 candidates. They have had responses from almost 100. They have been able to dispense with quite a few candidates. They have five candidates that are on the shortlist. That means people whose resumes have passed all qualification tests. And then they have also passed initial interviews with the Robert Half Group, the recruiting firm that we have hired. So these candidates have been already interviewed and vetted. They are on the shortlist. They will be going to the succession planning committee for an interview in the near future. At what point, we do not know. They will be getting back to the council because we did direct Robert Half They will be going to the succession planning committee for an interview in the near future. At what point, we do not know, they will be getting back to the council because we did direct Robert Half to cast an even broader net. We are very happy with the can, with the candidates on the shortlist, but we just wanted to make sure that we are getting as wide of a search as possible. And we have one candidate in development. That means that candidate's resume has passed the initial stages and they are undergoing interviews at this time, and three candidates in the pipeline. So actually, excuse me, the candidate in development has the resume and the interview, but they have not gotten the complete approval from the Robert Half recruiting firm yet to move onto the shortlist. Three candidates are in the pipeline. So right now, we've got eight candidates still in the running with a few more people being contacted. The idea is probably to have the succession planning committee further vet these candidates within the next several weeks. And city council will be brought in probably what, during that process because we want to have city council start seeing some of these people for ourselves. But the official interviews are going to be happening later. One thing that I will say for the, for the council is we all know that there is an election coming up and we do not know for certain if a city manager will be hired before that time is placed. But it is, it would be my intention to make a motion to allow any member on the current council to have a vote regardless of when, let's say if, if the city manager search happened to go a little bit late. I don't anticipate it going past June 17th. I think it'll actually be done early June. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone who has experienced the city manager form of government for the last four years definitely has a say. And I'm almo, I'm also considering what to do with the candidates that have declared that might be our city councilman going forward. I'm not sure on that, but we're just in a weird timeframe where we want to hire a city manager as soon as possible, but we have at least two great councilmen who are not going to be back to see the new city manager in place. Definitely want your feedback, but also want to be cognizant of the people who might be coming in. So not exactly sure how that one will figure out. I'd be taking suggestions on that. But I have no doubt, I, I actually do know a couple of the candidates personally. I've always been confident that we will have a great candidate. I am not a, I, I do not know all of the candidates, but I know the rigorous process that they've had to go through to get here. So I feel very confident that Watertown is going to get a great city manager and we're going to be better off than we ever have before. So is that, Councilman Danforth?
Well, all four go voting on renaming the lake if I can vote for the city manager. Although unless you want to let me do both. But in regards to the process, the, the one thing that I would ask as a councilperson and as a, a part of the body that's ultimately going to have the say of who's hired and who is managing the city manager is responsible for that person. I personally think it would be advantageous or beneficial to the people on this side of the desk to know of any and all local applicants, whether they pass, didn't pass the, the screening. I, I think it's important for us to at least know that. We aren't going to know anybody that's outside of that, that area. But it might be that we know things that our, our firm doesn't know. And I would request, whether that's, that's acceptable or not, that we are made aware of all applicants from a local standpoint. That'd be employees and non-employees.
All right, thank you very much. And actually, I think I could do that. I just get the list and just have to say, of course, it'll just be confidential, trust to that because obviously these people all have jobs and we don't want them to be in, we don't want them to get in trouble from their current place of employment. I will also say that the succession planning committee has been meeting at least once a week, every week since early December to do this. I think that they skipped one week, but, so they are still very active on it. And I know that they are scheduling interviews with the people on the shortlist. So I can get the names to council and just, let's keep it to ourselves. And you'll see, I think, why I have such confidence in, in the future and the candidates that we have. So I will also say, one other announcement that I have is after last week's work session, if council has any changes in their votes on their preference for council priority projects, please get that to me. We went through those 20 different ideas, and if you wanted to change your rankings, please get that to me. And that's all I have for right now. Any other council members have anything? City manager? There's no reason to go into executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth.